The meeting to order. Uh, roll.
Commissioner Ryan.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Blower. Commissioner Jewell.
Here.
Commissioner Cook Hawkins.
Here.
Commissioner Sorensen.
President.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Wesley.
Here, we have a quorum. Um, now we have, uh, the Remote Announcement Open Meetings Act. Uh, Kelly, are you doing that or is someone else doing that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and give it a try. Hopefully I won't cough in the middle of it.
Oh. Okay.
All boards and commissions must adhere to all laws established under the Michigan compiled laws. And in accordance with revisions to the Open Meetings Act adopted in Senate Bill 1108, as passed on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, and signed into law on October sixteenth, twenty twenty. A public announcement shall be made by each member who is attending the meeting remotely, that he or she is attending the meeting remotely, and stating his or her physical location.
Commissioner Ryan.
Commissioner Ryan appearing remotely from the city of Flint.
Commissioner Campbell.
Commissioner Campbell appearing remotely from the city of Flint.
Commissioner Blower. Commissioner Jewell.
This is Commissioner Jewell, appearing remotely from my residence, the city of Flint.
Commissioner Cook Hawkins.
Commissioner Cook Hawkins appear remotely from Flint, Michigan.
Commissioner Sorensen.
I am appearing remotely from my new porch in Flint, Michigan. I'm loving it.
It's a good day for it.
It is.
Commissioner Jordan.
Commissioner Jordan appearing remotely, joining, uh, Commissioner Sorensen from the porch experience in the city of Flint.
All right.
And Commissioner Wesley.
Uh, Commissioner Wesley appearing remotely from the city of Flint. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to, I think Attorney Kelly for the election. Thompson.
Commissioner Wesley.
Yes.
Um, Bill asked me, Kelly is not, uh, feeling well. You hear it in her voice and, um,
Yeah, I can hear that.
Um, Bill, yeah, and Bill asked me if I would handle that tonight. This is Suzanne.
Okay Suzanne, not a problem.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you.
You have control of the meeting at this point for the elections.
Thank you. So at this time, nominations are open for the Chair of the Flint Planning Commission. Are there any nominations for Chair?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I would like to nominate Mr. Bob Wesley for our Chair.
Thank you. We have a nomination for Mr. Bob Wesley. Are there any nom- any other nominations for Chair? Are there any other nominations for Chair? Are there any other nominations for Chair? Nominations are closed. Commissioner Wesley, do you accept this nomination?
Yes, I will and appreciate the commissioners' continual support and, uh, support of me. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the nomination for Bob Wesley as Chair of the Flint Planning Commission?
Commissioner Ryan.
Go ahead. Put down motion.
Commissioner Ryan, a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Support. Support.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Campbell. Uh, roll call please. Bill?
John.
Sorry, I was muted. Commissioner Ryan?
Or John, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blower. Commissioner Jewell.
Yes.
Commissioner Cook Hawkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wesley.
Hmm, yes. Thanks everyone for your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
At this time, I'll turn the meeting back over to Commissioner Wesley for the remaining nominations.
Nominations are now open for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewell.
Commissioner Jewell.
I'd like to place into nomination Elizabeth Jordan as Vice Chair.
Commissioner Campbell, my second.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Are there any other nominations for the Vice Chair? Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Nominations are now closed. Commissioners Jordan, are you willing, willing, willing to accept the nominations for Vice Chair?
I, I am, and I appreciate the, uh, the support and thoughtfulness of my colleagues. Thank you.
Is there a motion to for the nomination for Vice Chair, Commissioner Elizabeth Jordan?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewell. I'll make a motion to accept the nomination election of Elizabeth Jordan as our Vice Chair.
Do I hear support?
Support.
The movement properly supported for Elizabeth Jordan for Vice Chair. Uh, roll.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blower? Commissioner Wes- I mean Commissioner Jewell?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook Hawkins?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley?
Most heartily, yes. Next. Nominations for Secretary?
Mr. Chair, I would, um, like to nominate Commissioner Carol Ann Blower for Secretary.
I'll support that.
Now, it's Commissioner Blower for Secretary. Uh, I think, uh, some of the commissioners have spoken with her and she is willing to accept that nomination in that position if so granted, if so voted in by the commissioners. Are there any other nominations for Secretary? Any other nominations for Secretary? Nomination of Secretary is now closed.
Motion to approve Ms. Blower for Secretary.
Motion for approval of Ms. Blower for Secretary.
I'll support that.
Been properly supported. Roll.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah.
Commissioner Blower? Commissioner Jewell?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook Hawkins?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley?
Yes. Uh, also, as we have done in the past, um, we, a volunteer member of the commission serves on the ZBA as our representative.
He's such a good boy.
And in the past, Commissioner Blower has been that person, and as I understand it, she is, she continues to, uh, and willing to be our representative on the zoning board of appeals. So I guess as Chair, I guess I can, uh, nominate Commissioner Bauer for our representative for the ZBA.
Support.
Supported. And you know, is there anyone else wishing to be a representative? We all have one, so. And she's been doing an excellent job for us in that area.
True.
Uh, so our nominations are closed, and let's have, I guess we can have a, a voice vote. Uh, so Jeff, if you want to have that role for the ZBA representative, uh, Commissioner Carol Ann Blower.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blower? Commissioner Jewell?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook Hawkins?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wesley?
Yes. Thanks everyone, uh, for the participation in that election. Next, we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
This is Commissioner Jewell.
Commissioner Jewell.
If you take a look on our agenda to M old business, the last one listed, City of Flint Planning Commission Virtual Meetings, I think that was inadvertently added on. We have, uh, addressed that at our last meeting. So I think it'd be appropriate to delete that.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda, um, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
No, April twenty-seven.
It says thirteen on here. I'm sorry.
You're looking at three minutes.
Today is the twenty-seventh, so the minutes had been set for the thirteen.
Not the minutes, the agenda.
Oh, I thought you said minutes. I'm sorry.
I might have said the minutes, but I meant the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm only listening. I would, excuse me, I would like to, uh, approve the minutes from the agenda for twenty twenty-seven, thirty, twenty twenty-one, April twenty.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I hear support?
Support. Mr. Ryan?
All in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
It appeared, appears unanimous. The minutes from April thirteenth. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of April thirteenth?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewell.
Yes, Commissioner Jewell.
If we were to take a look at page two, under case review, second paragraph, uh, where it states Commissioner Jewell stated, it should read Commissioner Jewell stated his understanding, stated his understanding that the applicant has one year to respond to conditions once the administrative approval is given. After that, we need to include Attorney Thompson confirmed the one-year limit. That's on page two. On page five, I'm just asking for a clarification from staff, and Bill can verify this. This is one, two, three, four, the fourth paragraph down, where it states Mr. Vander Cook confirmed that the applicant was informed by himself and KZ, applicant, that conditional approval could be given before the parcels were combined. I just wanted to double check with staff if that was what was stated or not.
Commissioner, uh, was it this with Bill Vander Cook? That was not properly stated.
Could, could you verify the proper statement, please?
One moment. Commissioner, uh, Wesley, Commissioner Jewell, I'm having just a, uh, problem finding that in the paragraph. Could you again, one more time, point that out? I heard it.
It's the fourth paragraph under, uh, PC twenty-one, three ninety-nine.
It's in the middle of it.
It's the last line that, it says, uh, Mr. Vander Cook confirmed that the applicant was informed by himself and KZ that conditions approved could be given before the parcels were combined.
I would, I would say that, um, really, they could not, is my understanding in zoning, um, and without the planning commission approval. So could, should be, could not.
Okay. Mr. Chair, could we accept that as a correction?
Yes.
Okay. Additionally, on page ten, we take a look at um, the, the second paragraph down, where, um, Attorney Thompson had made reference to the fact that, um, the new permanent marijuana ordinance allows for administrative approval of co-located marijuana facilities. And then additionally, if no changes were made to the footprint of the building, applicants can be administratively approved. It's my understanding, additionally, the discussion had this would be done in consultation with the Planning Commission Chair, which had been referenced both in our last meeting, as well as discussions during the establishment of the ordinance. So the sentence would be, this would be done in consultation with the Planning Commission Chair.
Mr. Chair, this is Kelly Thompson.
Yes, Kelly.
Commissioner Jewell is correct. That's what the ordinance says.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Additionally, if we go to the next paragraph, in the, in the middle where it stated that Ms. Thompson confirmed this, Ms. Thompson additionally stated that there are no restrictions on the money, on where the money could be allocated. Ms. Thompson noted she would discuss this with Suzanne Wilcox as to the status of revenues. So the additional statement would be, Ms. Thompson noted she would discuss with Suzanne Wilcox as to the status of revenues. And then, I think I have, my apologies, I think we need to go back to page three. No, my apologies, it's page seven. And on page seven, in the second paragraph, at the end of the paragraph, the paragraph reads, Commissioner Jewell offered to modify his motion to have the continuation of the public hearing added to the agenda of the meeting in which the site plans will be presented. Mr. Rootka, Rootka, my apologies if I mispronounced that, and Mr. Vander Cook both agreed with this motion. What needs to be added there is Commissioner Campbell, who seconded the original motion, agreed to amending the motion. So Commissioner Campbell, who seconded the original motion, agreed to amending the motion, because we had amended the motion. Mr. Chair, those are the corrections that I had.
Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Any other additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I just have in my notes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sorensen, um, on the issue that Mr. um, Jewell raised on the, um, on page five, about the combining of the parcels and the conditional, uh, approval. Um, I just have in my notes that the properties will have to be combined, and the applicant has not applied to combine those properties. So, um, I just wanted to share what I had in my notes from that meeting. Thank you.
Any other additions, corrections to the minutes? Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the amendments of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, with the necessary corrections and additions.
Commissioner Ryan, motion to approve the minutes of April thirteenth with amendments and conditions.
Commissioner Campbell, second.
Properly moved and second, that the minutes of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one be approved with the additions of corrections and additions. Roll.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah.
Commissioner Blower? Commissioner Jewell?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook Hawkins?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wesley?
Yes. The minutes of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one has been approved. Next on our agenda is a public forum. The public is invited to take part on anything appearing on our agenda this evening. If there are anyone out there in the virtual audience that wishing to address the commission, uh, you may do so at this time. If you are want to address anything concerning the public hearing, you would have an opportunity to do so when that PC number is called for the public hearing. All other comments, if you wish to address the commission, you can do so now. Is there anyone out there wishing to address the commission? Anyone wishing to address the commission? Is there anyone wishing to address the commission? KZ, is there anyone wishing to address the commission outside of those individuals who might be out there that want to participate in the public hearing, uh, on the PCs that we have before this, before us this evening?
Um, there are no public speakers.
Okay. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Anyone wishing to address, address the commission? That portion of the public forum is now closed. Now we have the public hearing. First item on our agenda for the public hearing is PC two-one-four-zero-two, Triply Forest LLC. LLC is requesting a Group E special regulated use permit for a medical marijuana facility at nineteen oh-one South Door Highway, PID forty-one sixteen, three, five, one, dash, zero, two, zero. Uh, the applicant's present. Uh, but at this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Vander Cook, uh, his statements, uh, concerning the PC two-one-four-zero-two.
Thank you, Commissioner Wesley. Um, yes, for PC twenty-one, four oh-two, Triply Forest LLC. Uh, the applicant is, um, has provided all the materials. Um, Triply Forest is requesting, uh, Group E special regulated use permit for a medical marijuana facility. We, um, within the staff report, um, you'll see that there was a motion to approve, uh, PC nineteen-three-five-two, right, uh, data, Triply Forest, request for a Group E special regulated use permit for a medical marijuana provisioning center. The request was, um, motion was made and it was approved at the meeting on November nineteenth, twenty twenty, conditionally. The conditions were met for the PC case and the site plan review. According to city code, in the staff report, there's a statement that says according to building, which should be struck out, it should say, according to city code, fifty-one, sixty-two, application to establish a special regulated use. An approved application for special regulated use except the Group E, you shall become known void if the use is not commenced within three months of approval date unless the planning commission grants an extension within a time. So the planning commission had not requested an extension because the applicant had, had never came back. So that's why the applicant is here today, reapplying for the Group E special regulated use for medical. Thank you, Commissioner Wesley.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewell. Just for, yeah, just for clarification, our purpose is to take a look at, I, I guess rehearing to grant a grouping special regulated use permit. We're not here to do an approval of a site plan. Is that correct?
That is my understanding. Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Wesley, that's correct. We just have the PC case.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
For clarification, Commissioner Wesley, I said the commission did not request an extension. It was actually the applicant and did not request an extension after ninety days. That was their obligation.
Right. Okay. Is the applicant present? Yes.
Yeah, we are.
Yes.
Okay, tell us about your, your operation.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nicole Milton. I've been working with Triply Forest for the last couple of years. I see some familiar faces because it's been a while, and I'm glad, uh, everybody's healthy and safe. Um, I, just to recap, is that we were before this board, uh, in two thousand nineteen, uh, where everyone had approved our site plan approval at that time. And we did do our modifications. We filed city code and had our inspections through electric plumbing, plumbing, building, and mechanical. Uh, electric was March eighteenth, plumbing was, uh, four-eight, and building was three-twenty-two, as well as our, our mechanical was four-eight. Um, we're just waiting for our final approval. We did miss our extension. Uh, at that time, it, it was just, what can I say about last year? You know, it, it, we, we missed our deadline. So we're back before this board. Uh, to move forward, we've already put in over three hundred thousand dollars into the building to build out and trying to get to that final finish line with your help.
Okay. Um, is there questions from the commission to the applicant?
So this is Commissioner Jordan. Um, I appreciate, you know, that explanation, and, and that was one of my questions is to understand the reasons for the delay, and certainly, um, last year was a doozy, so. Um, it, it didn't appear from what I could glean that there was any substantial changes that you were proposing compared to what had been proposed last time, but I, um, I guess I'll ask you, if, if there are any substantial changes that you've made between when this was initially approved and what you're seeking now, can you walk us through what those would be?
Actually, we don't have any changes. We, we didn't do anything different. You know, we really just missed the mark considering that the construction company shut down and then, you know, going into getting supplies at that point to get to this point. It's just been an ongoing gift that kept giving. So that was really the reason for us missing our mark.
Thank you.
Other questions from the commission to the applicant?
Yeah, th- this is Commissioner Jewel.
Commissioner Jewel.
Yeah, i- is it Nicole, Nicole Milton?
It is Nicole. Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I pronounced it correctly. Okay. And your role with Triply Forest?
I've been working with Triply Forest through this whole process, you know, give or take. We just work together with the architects and the attorney and.
I understand that. What's your organizational role with the organization?
Consulting.
Okay. So are you here speaking on behalf of the owner, which is, and correct me, Ridal Dato?
Yes, Dato, yes.
Okay.
And he is online as well.
Okay, Mr. Dato?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, my name is Darren Dato.
Oh, Darren.
Yeah, well, Riaf, Riaf is the owner. I will be speaking on behalf of him because he does have a language barrier.
Okay, thank you ever so much. In fact, if I think I, if I remember correctly, you were of support our last time through.
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
And so forth. Can, and I appreciate Nicole's role and involvement, but can you just provide some verbal clarification of what Nicole shared with us?
Yeah, basically, I mean, as far as, we had complications with the whole COVID thing on construction. We had a contractor, the contractor didn't come through, so we had to find another contractor. We found them and we've been dealing with the situation of not being able to find material, employees not showing up to work. There's a whole bunch of stuff that just was piled on basically on top of everything else.
Okay, I, I appreciate your commentary. I appreciate Nicole's role as a consultant and so forth, but as part of our process, as you probably are well aware, we want to make sure we're doing our due diligence so we can say that we heard directly from you.
Absolutely, I understand.
And appreciate it. Thank you ever so much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commission to the applicant? Any other questions from the commission to the applicant? Hearing none, we'll, I'll open it up from, for public comment. Is anyone out in the public wishing to address the commission concerning PC 21402 Triply Forest, request for a Group E special regulated use permit for a medical marijuana facility at 1901 South Door Highway, PID 4116351020. Is anyone in the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of PC 21402?
Through the chair, this is Attorney Curly, and I just wanted clarification on Mr. Dato. Is the gentleman sitting next to Darren Dato the owner?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, your name again was Attorney who?
Attorney Charlie Curly with the City of Flint.
Oh, City of Flint, okay. Is there one, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? I don't know, that was, of PC 21402? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Oh, I'm sorry. KZ, is it anyone on, else on the line that might want to speak?
Oh, just telling Bill, he forgot to ask me. There are no one on the line.
Okay, thank you. That portion is closed. Anyone wishing to oppose? PC 21402? Anyone wishing to oppose? Anyone, anyone wishing to oppose? KZ, is anyone out there?
Nope. There's no one.
That portion of the public hearing is now closed. What is the desire of the commission?
Ms. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel. As I, as I usually asked through you to staff, have we received any other communications, emails, or phone calls regarding this public hearing?
Commissioner Wesley, Commissioner Jewel, there's been no other communications regarding this case.
Thank you.
What is the desire of the commission?
Chairman Wesley, I would, this is Commissioner Jordan, I would move approval of PC 21-402 Triply Forest LLC requesting a Group E special regulated use permit for a medical marijuana facility at 1901 South Door, PID 4116351020.
It's been moved. Is there your support?
Support.
Moved and properly supported by Commissioner Ryan. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel again. Through you to staff, in, in our approval of this special regulated use, does that also mean we need to go through the process for the related site plan review?
Commissioner, Commissioner Wesley, Kelly, Assistant City Attorney Kelly Thompson can step in, but it's my understanding that the, the only thing that was null and void after 90 days of special regulated use, the site plan was approved and the site plan has a one-year expiration date if, if they don't proceed and they, they have proceeded with building permits. So the site plan should, should still be active.
Okay, thank you ever so much.
Mr. Chair, this is Kelly Thompson.
Yes, Kelly.
I would just ask the applicant on the record to confirm whether there have been any changes to the, the approved site plans.
There has not. I think, okay, you can ask, answer that, Nicole or?
Uh, yeah, there has not been any changes at all. So everything's still the same.
Because I think Commissioner Jordan had asked that question and that was the response that was given, that they didn't know anything different that was on the original site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would echo the, these statements that Bill made regarding the, the site plans.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, there's been a motion for approval for PC 21402 Triply Forest LLC request for a Group E special regulated use permit for a medical marijuana facility at 1901 South Door Highway. Roll.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah.
Commissioner Blower? Commissioner Jewel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook-Hawkins?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley?
Yes. To the applicant, your request has been approved.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, the next two items on our agenda, PC 21403 and PC 210, no, PC 21403 and PC 404, as I understand it, have to be re-
Applied.
Yeah, reapplied or, not reapply. Take it off.
Commissioner Wesley, Bill Vandercook?
Yeah, Bill.
I think, I think we reschedule those, Commissioner Wesley.
Yeah, supposed to be rescheduled, as I understand it.
Thank you.
So those two will be rescheduled because of posting in the legal news era. So we're going to go down to PC 21405 Lindsay Med Supply Station, request a Group E special regulated use permit for an adult-use recreational marijuana retail facility at 1960 West Hemp Hill Road, PID 4025153029. Okay, the applicant is present, but we'll have a report from the staff, staff report on PC 21405.
Thank you, Commissioner Wesley. This is Bill Vandercook. Lindsay's Med Supply Station, they're requesting a Group E special regulated use permit for an adult-use recreational marijuana facility at 1960 West Hemp Hill Road. Lindsay's Med Supply Station is currently grandfathered in. The, the applicant has provided all of the materials that are required for this application. Thank you.
Is the applicant present?
Yes, I am.
Tell us about your operation, your facility, please.
Uh, yeah, we already have another marijuana business there and we are adding the adult use, expanding the building, redoing the inside of the building and some of the outside. We turned in all the blueprints also at the same time and we're just trying to make it for both medical and recreational.
Okay. Questions from the commission to the applicant?
This is Commissioner Jordan. I just had a question. This is something I often like to ask to any sort of existing operations looking to add to their special regulated use. And that is, have there been any, any violations that have occurred regarding the existing special regulated use?
No, I don't have any violations.
Thank you.
Other questions from the commission to the applicant?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel. If I know, this is Pierre Ne- is it Nager?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, I, I, I see you and I see the name and I just wanted to make sure it matches up and so forth.
Yeah.
Um, I, I guess in stepping back, you might be able to be of help, but question to, to the chair and maybe to the staff, i- is this an, a co- co-located program that we discussed at our last meeting since they were already grandfathered in and they already have their medical marijuana permit? Does this fit under that category?
So Vandercook, would you want to address that question? Or Kelly, if she's there?
Well, Commissioner Wesley, could you ask Commissioner Jewel to just elaborate just for a minute on the, the meeting he was discussing?
Okay, the applicant had already previously applied for a medical marijuana permit, which he has been operating, correct, Mrs. Nager? And, and he is now applied for an adult use permit, which is at the same facility, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if you remember at, Bill and Kelly, at our meeting, the last, our last meeting, we talked about the medic, the marijuana ordinance and the role of co-located programs at the same facility. So my question is, does this fall within that realm?
This is Kelly Thompson. And Commissioner Jewel, if I could just clarify that I'm understanding your, your question correctly, you're, you're asking about the location requirements and if, if this co-located facility would still satisfy those locational requirements? And in particular, perhaps the, the, the limit of so many in a certain radius?
I, well, I, I think we're okay with that. I was thinking about, and maybe I misinterpreted it, is that, it, that administratively, that if an applicant already has an existing facility and is looking at adding, i.e. the adult use, that that could be administratively done as long as they meet the, the internal criteria in consultation with the planning commission chair? Or am I talking outside that parameter?
No, Commissioner Jewel, that's correct. The only thing that, that would be added to that per the ordinance is that there, there cannot have been changes to the previously approved site plans. So if they meet the locational requirements, if there are no changes to the previously approved site plans and in consultation with the chair, then it can be administratively approved.
Okay, all right. So, 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 Mr. Nager, I, I will ask, because you had mentioned there was, in the process of doing some, I'll use the term physical changes to the site. So when you submitted previously a site plan, have there been any, I guess, Commissioner Jordan asked this, but any significant changes to the physical site?
No, since it was approved last and we've been in operation, nothing has been changed. But we are planning on making the changes before we get all the approvals and open up. And we have turned in all the site land, plans and, you know, that you should have there. And it shows how everything's going to be done and, you know, to make it a bigger place and have it used in the full building instead of a small partial of the building.
Okay, that's helpful for me. And hang on, hang, hang on a bit, okay? So through the chair to you, Bill, so a site plan review will then be scheduled accordingly?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay. So Mr. Nager, okay, that'd be fine. So Mr. Nager, as we are here now, okay, and your effort to move towards an inclusion of recreational use, can you just walk me through, I show up at the door, just walk me through what would happen?
Oh, basically, right now, we have only like a small portion of the building that's being used for the medical marijuana. And now there's going to be another 1,500 square feet would be opened up to make it for both use as the state required. And we applied to the state about everything, how it should be, how they want it to be, which will be divided into different, basically spots where people can go to medical or people can go to recreational. And there'll be, when you walk in the door, there'll be a window where people get checked in. And if they're in the medical marijuana, they have their card, they go to one side of the counters. And then if it's recreational, then they're going to go to the other side of the counter where all the separate products will be. There'll be separate products, just like the state requires it to be. And we're in the process of getting things approved at the state to tell us how they would like to have it done specifically. And we've talked to them about it and they seem to be, everything's okay. They gave us an idea on how to do it. So we're going to be following what they're telling us that we could do to make it work for everybody and to their approval.
Mr. Najah, did I pronounce that correctly, Najah?
Yes, Najah, yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Najah, thank you ever so much for your time.
Sure, no problem.
Are there any other questions from the commission to the applicant? Any other questions from the commission to the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Najah. We will, I'm opening it up now for the public. Is anyone out of the public wishing to speak in favor of PC two-one-four-zero-five Lazy Med Supply Station request for a Group E Special Regulated Use Permit for an adult-use recreational marijuana retail facility at nineteen sixty West Hemp Hill Road? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in favor?
Commissioner Wesley, this is Joanne Gurley again, Assistant Attorney of the City of Flint. If you could just please have, um, the applicant state his full name on the record and his, uh, title with, uh, the company, please.
Okay. Could the applicant?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, the name is Pierre Najah, and, um-
We just go your last name, Mr. Najah?
Okay, it's N as in Nancy, A-J-J-A-R, Pierre Najah. Uh, I'm the only owner of the, the business and the property. Uh, I'm a hundred percent, uh, on my own. I own a hundred percent of the shares of the company.
Thank you.
Attorney Gurley, did I satisfy your, your question?
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Uh, that portion is, uh, KZ, is anyone out there?
There are no public speakers.
No public speakers? Okay, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Is there anyone wishing to oppose PC two-one-four-zero-five Lazy Med Supply Station request for a Group E Special Regulated Use Permit for an adult-use recreational marijuana retail facility at nineteen sixty West Hemp Hill? Anyone wishing to oppose? Anyone wishing to oppose? Anyone wishing to oppose? KZ, once again, is anyone? In the audience?
There are no public, public speaker, speakers.
Okay, thank you. Um, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Uh, KZ, did we, did we get any emails? I know Commissioner Jewel is, wait, do we have any emails or any other communications?
There are no other communications.
Thank you. Uh, what is the desire of the commission for PC twenty-one four-zero-five? What is the desire of the commission?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve PC twenty-nine dash four-zero-five Lindsay Medical Supply Station, which requesting a Group E Special Regulated Use for an adult-use recreational marijuana facility at nineteen sixty West Hemp Hill Road, uh, PID forty dash twenty-five one five three, then it's like zero two nine.
Do I hear support?
Support, Commissioner Ryan.
It's moved to properly supported for Commissioner, by Commissioner Ryan. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll for approval of PC twenty-one four oh five Lazy Med Supply Station request for a Group E Special Regulated Use Permit for an adult-use recreational marijuana retail facility at nineteen sixty West Hemp Hill Road, PID forty twenty-five one five three zero two nine. Roll.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blower? Commissioner Jewel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Najah, your site, your request has been approved. PC twenty-one four zero five Lazy Med Supply Station for a Group E Special Regulated Use Permit for an adult-use recreational marijuana retail facility at nineteen sixty West Hemp Hill Road. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, we have no site plan reviews. Case re- case reviews. Uh, kicking over stuff here. First case review is SPR twenty-nine four one, Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village is requesting a site plan review of forty-one nineteen North Saginaw Street. Uh, Vandercook, what's happening with that?
Commissioner Wesley, we have no report for PC SPR, I'm sorry, twenty-nine forty-one Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village.
Uh, they haven't got back?
That's correct, Commissioner Wesley.
Okay. What is the desire of the commission? We continue this on our agenda so it don't get lost?
Commissioner Wesley, this is Commissioner Jordan. I think, um, the approach we discussed last time was, at this point, staff has reached out to each of them that are listed to, to prod them once and that we would keep it on the agenda in case there's any updates, but that we wouldn't expect staff to continue to reach out to them on a weekly basis.
So, be on our next agenda? Next is SPR twenty-one nine four five, Community First. Glenn Wilson is requesting a site plan review at twenty-seven sixty-five Flushing Road. Uh, to the staff, any communications with Community First?
Commissioner Wesley, this is Bill Vandercook, uh, regarding SPR twenty-one nine forty-five, Community's First. There's no report.
You know, I spoke with, uh, Glenn Wilson, he was gonna get, uh, his person in charge of that, give him a call, so.
Good night, morning.
Cause I know that was an item that was on our, on our agenda. So, was, we'll continue this on the agenda? Okay. Next item is SPR twenty-one nine four six, Syracan Incorporated, request for a site plan review. Vandercook, anything from Syracan?
Commissioner Wesley, regarding SPR twenty-one nine forty-six, Syracan, there's no report.
Miss, uh, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel. At our last meeting on the thirteenth, and also noted in our minutes, um, and if I, I understand that, uh, their attorney, Brenda Williams, had requested and we had sent, uh, information to them regarding the conditions, et cetera, et cetera. And staff was informed at that time that information would be presented to us this evening at our meeting on the twenty-seventh. So, two things, one, I just wanna verify that with staff. Um, i- i- is that a correct, uh, reflection of last, uh, meeting, Bill?
Commissioner Wesley, to Commissioner Jewel, that's a correct statement.
Okay.
I've not heard back from their attorney, I have not heard back from their attorney or the applicant.
And my, and secondly, my reason for raising that is so that we include that in the minutes and that we keep this on our agenda, um, as the means of tracking follow-up by applicants. Um, again, as a side note, when we start to take a look in the future for site plan reviews, we might want to be a bit conscientious of a timeframe regarding establishing conditions.
All right. On conditions. Timeframe on conditions, got it. Establish the timeframe on conditions. Put that in my notes. Okay, moving right along. Uh, reports, status of the permanent marijuana ordinance. Kelly, you wanna give a, a brief, uh, you know, one-word statement like, I don't feel like talking, oh.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Attorney Kelly Thompson, and I apologize, I didn't do this sooner. Um, I, I would take this opportunity to introduce this Assistant City Attorney, Joanne Gurley. She will be taking over for me, um, and I'm passing the baton to her very capable hands. I know she'll do a, a great job and, um, I'll continue to assist behind the scenes as necessary, but I know she's gonna do a great job. And so, in terms of the permanent marijuana ordinance, um, as the commission knows, all three have been adopted and the website has been updated. Um, staff has updated the application forms to be consistent with the new ordinances. And I think there are some, um, remaining things that, that, um, we're doing to make sure that we're prepared to enforce, um, and administer the new ordinances. So, um, so all of that is in motion now and continuing to progress.
Thank you. To Attorney Joanne Gurley, we've heard that soft voice a couple of times during the meeting, but welcome aboard and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Um, I wanted to make sure I wasn't yelling, but I see I need to speak up louder. Thank you all.
And that, thank you. We have fun here.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner, this is Commissioner Jewel. Uh, uh, two items, first off, thank you, Kelly, thank you, thank you, thank you, and Joanne, welcome, welcome, welcome. And, and the second item is noted in our minutes from last week. Uh, Kelly, you did an outstanding job of giving an overview on the permanent marijuana ordinance and the application process and the forms and so forth. And you did, I, I think, an on-screen, uh, presentation for us. Uh, you did mention that you would make sure, including our packet, would be hard copies of that, that was, that actual application so that we would be familiar with that. Uh, could you follow up on that?
Yes, I sure can, Commissioner Jewel. And you're, if you could, um, you're asking for the, the new application forms to be included in your packets?
Correct, that was, that was stated at our meeting last week. You had given an overview, you had shown, uh, the process, the applications, and you had noted that you would make sure a packet of the blank application forms would be included for us, for our, uh, information and awareness.
Certainly, and I, I apologize for that. If, um, if Bill or, or Jonathan, if you guys could confirm that those can be made available to the commissioners.
Mr. Wesley, this is Bill Vandercook, uh, to Commissioner Jewel and Assistant City Attorney Kelly Thompson. We'll definitely make a package and have that in the next packet that goes out to the commissioners.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, um, anything else? For the status of the permanent marijuana ordinance? No? Next is, um, Kelly, get some hot tea, toddy, that includes liquor.
I'm on my fourth cup of green tea for the day.
Ah, that green stuff is no good, girl. Put some, put some liquor, put some liquor in it.
Actually, I would like, do you mind? Um, do you mind regarding the permanent ordinance and regarding the discussion that was brought up at the last meeting and some of the, um, comments that Commissioner Jewel has made about the ordinance and the right for those to be administratively reviewed, uh, with the chairman's approval or, um, you know, his appointment of someone else to assist, right? Uh, a zoning coordinator has the, has the right, um, i- if he feels like there's a need to, to pass on a case to the planning commission. So, at this point in time, Lindsay's Med only came before the planning commission because we're still working through that process, okay? The, the upcoming cases that we have to consider adult use that already have a medical, we're, we're this week gonna start review tho- those cases, reviewing those cases systematically. One, they have to have a state license. Two, nothing within our application can change, change at all. Three, the site plan can't change at all. Um, so, the whole process, we're still working it through. And that's why, and only why Lindsay's Med came to the planning commission tonight. Because, um, you know, of, of some past history, I felt it was important that, for the record, that statements were made before the commission. Um, and then we can, in the, in the future, very shortly, be able to review Lindsay's Med site plan to ensure that there was, in fact, you know, no changes to the site plan, which I don't believe there was, but we just have to go through the complete review process.
Okay, Bill, did you just take us back to PC twenty-one four oh five?
Um, should I not have done that? If I did, I apologize.
Well, the, the, the problem here, it's not a problem, but we were down, uh, in reports and then everybody had to shift their gears and go back up to four oh five. But I think I understand what you said, uh.
Well, that was the only reason why I wanted to say that, you know, regarding like the permanent ordinance, now that it's in place, is that.
Okay. The permanent is orders that, and, but you got a process in place, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So, Commissioner Wesley, the only reason why Lindsay's Med Supply came tonight is because we didn't have the process in place.
Okay.
For the commission.
All right. Uh, just don't confuse me, Bill. Uh, I, I, I got confused, but I got a, I got a clarification now. I'm good.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel.
Oh, I'm finna get further confused.
I, I think Bill was, in his effort tying it into the overall picture of the permanent marijuana-
Permanent marijuana ordinance, right, right, I got it.
Would that be a correct perception, Bill, as my, as the role of the zoning coordinator here and making sure process is being, uh, pursued?
Thank you, Commissioner Jewel, uh, Commissioner Wesley to Commissioner Jewel, that's correct.
I got it, we got it. We set now. Uh, Attorney Gurley, Attorney Gurley, don't worry, we wanna be clear. Okay.
So, so, Mr. Chair, anytime there's any additional confusion, just give me a heads up, okay?
I, I, we got it, we got it. Uh, next item is the status of the marijuana, uh, revenue. Does the commission get some of that money, Suzanne, what?
The commission for like chicken dinners or something? Um,
Okay, all right.
So, so I-
Let's be, let's be good.
Uh, I did have a, um, I did have a preliminary conversation, Kelly and I have not- Kelly and I have not had a chance to talk about this, but I did have a preliminary conversation with the mayor about the revenue. I think that it is going to be, it obviously has to be used for um marijuana licensing related activities. So um, I think that planning and development is going to be allowed to keep that eighty-seven thousand dollars. And we are discussing internally um the ability of the department to hire. I need to confirm that and verify that, and I think it needs to be actually moved over into the department because I think it was accepted into a general revenue account of the city. But um, our plan is to utilize that money to hire another planner um to focus specifically on marijuana. I know that you can see the workload that exists with these cases. I, I don't know that you're aware of the um, of the, you know, full volume of work and kind of overwhelming nature of it. I know we've talked about it, but um, it is, it is def- it is definitely overwhelming. So, we're looking at being able to utilize that money for hiring an additional planner, one, um, in, in planning and development specifically dedicated to marijuana licensing. Um, we, as you know, we have a zoning consultant um on board. That contract actually expires the end of this month. We are looking at getting it renewed, I'm processing a change order uh for that right now. But ultimately, you know, the goal is for planning and development to be self-sufficient, not rely upon outside consultants. So um, we believe that there's enough work to um definitely support hiring another planner. So that is our plan for it, once we get final confirmation.
Okay. Any questions from the commission to the, to Ms. Wilcox? Okay, status of the draft zoning ordinance and staffing update.
Do you have a staffing update?
Mr. Chair, this is Kelly Thompson.
You said staff, I'm sorry, staffing update?
Yeah, uh, yes, status of the draft zoning ordinance and staffing update. So whoever want to go first?
I'll let Kelly go first.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, this is Kelly Thompson. The first six articles of the draft zoning code have been approved by council and adopted. Um, per the, the language that I put in um, in the ordinances, they don't take effect until all eighteen articles have been adopted by council. So, so the first six articles are, are adopted and approved. However, they don't go into effect until the entire code is approved. And there are obvious reasons for that. We want to make sure that we maintain consistency and we're not toggling between two different zoning codes at the same time. So um, the next six articles, my understanding is that the request has been made through administration that it, the next art, next six articles be added to council's agenda. So I'm checking the agendas as they are released by council staff and, and seeing when the next meeting might be for those. My assumption is that it will be the next committee meeting, the next legislative committee meeting. Um, and Suzanne, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think that would be a week from tomorrow.
Yeah, I think they, yep.
Thank you, thank you. So I would, I'll be looking um to that agenda for the next six articles.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Jordan. I feel like there should be fireworks going off as you're talking about that. You said that with such poise and calm, and I'm over here about ready to dance in my chair. This has been so, so long in coming. Um, that, that's very, very welcome news. Thank you to all the staff who have sat through so many of the council meetings and been on hand in order to provide your expertise and insight. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, I, I think some of the thanks needs to go back to the commission as well. I mean, the, I'm, I'm, I joined this team about a year ago. Um, and, and I know that there was a lot of groundwork that went into it before we started sitting in on these council meetings. So, so thank you to the commission as well for dra- drafting this.
That's, that's something different.
It's a team effort.
I, I second that uh as well. Thank you to the commission, for sure. Um, I do have one thing that I want to add just to pa- this based upon our experience with the first six articles. Um, there, you know, there, there were um commenters and they were the si- same commenters for all six articles. And again, it was really kind of focused on uh things that were not um specifically related to those six arti- articles, lack of understanding of the articles. But we heard the same refrain over and over again about, you know, how the master plan is designed to displace residents and how we're trying to um, you know, create these areas and move people out of areas, create green space. Um, they don't want green space, they want, we're, we're not able to do housing development. And it, and it was the same, the same about five people that commented every time. And my thought was that it would be really helpful uh for there to be some other voices heard on the council meeting, people who support the zoning ordinance actually understand what it does, what a, what a zoning ordinance um is for, um, how it is not actually doing that. And I just wondered, you know, with your contacts and yourselves, I know we talked about the planning commission members, particular members of the planning commission being a, a part of um this process. But I just wondered if, you know, we could have, i- i- if maybe the commissioners could themselves or reach out to some of their contacts who could also speak up in support of um, who could also speak up, but in support of the zoning ordinance, ordinances at the next um council meeting. There's an opportunity for public speaking um during the meeting. And then there's obviously a public hearing that's held for each of the ordinances um at the, at the meeting where the second reading is held. And I, I do think it would be helpful, even though I know it would extend the meeting. Um, but I do think it would be helpful to hear other voices. Um, who could, you know, maybe hear some of those comments, react to them. I think it's helpful to hear it from members of the community rather than staff, although we certainly are doing that too, to the extent that we can. So that was just the suggestion I had uh for the next six articles and then the last six articles.
This is Commissioner Jordan, again, um, one thought that I, I might have, I mean, this does feel kind of momentous that we have a step toward that. And I hear you when you say that there's, there could be benefits from some greater community awareness to help push the remaining articles over the finish line. One of the resources that the, that we, is at our disposal is that we have the Imagine Flint email list. And, you know, for some time during the master planning process and then afterwards, there would be periodic informational updates sent out to that list. And it would, um, in my opinion, be an appropriate occasion to send out to that list, hey, you know, remember the zoning code? It's a really important step of helping to implement the master plan that you participated in. We wanted to let you know that council has reviewed and adopted the first third of that. Here are the next two opportunities where they're going to be talking about these next ones. And we would encourage you to participate and share your voice if you're so inclined. You know, something that's really brief, but just, you know, we have, I think this, we have five thousand people in the city of Flint who were part of this. And I'm, I'm certainly, you know, I could reach out to a handful of people I personally know, but part of the power of our process was the fact it was so very broad and so very deep. And I think it's both appropriate to circle back with them as part of our showing how, how we're, we haven't lost sight of this, um, kind of an accountability and reporting back to them on what the status is and also inviting them on how they can continue to be involved.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Commissioner Jordan.
Yeah, I think we should use all those communicative s- tools that we have in our toolbox to let uh the community know what we're doing, uh what we have done and what's going on at this time. Okay? Uh, staffing update, Suzanne?
Um, well, you heard a portion of it related to um hoping to be able to use a, a portion of the, or, or the revenue that we've received for hiring an additional planner. I do um have a sad announcement to make, um, and I don't know, I, I think Jeffrey's on the call today. Um.
Yeah, I know.
So he has, he has, he has announced it to staff, but Jeffrey will be leaving us um due to some other family obligations. So Friday is his actual last day. Um, yeah, so we're, we're really sad um to be losing Jeffrey. He's, he's done a phenomenal job in his time here, uh, really working to help organize records, you know, help guide staff, provide some of his um, provide leadership, you know, with, with his extensive background, particularly in land bank and real estate and law. And so we are really going to miss him. Um, and so we're working to fill that position as quickly as possible. Um, HR should be posting it this week. Um, and that is unfortunate for us. I don't know, Jeffrey, if you want to say anything? Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Uh, no, I mean, it's been a, a pleasure working with you. I'm, I'm sorry that it was so brief, it was not my intention, but um I had some family stuff come up here and some stuff back in Ohio uh that's made the transition a little bit more difficult. So I'm just going to have to step away uh for a bit to deal with that. Uh, I apologize for the upheaval uh that it causes, um, but um, I, I've got to make that choice.
Jeff, we're sorry to hear that, that you're leaving. And I'm probably especially sorry because you're going back to Ohio.
I'll still be here, but I, yeah, we have to start making more trips back to Ohio.
I wanted an opportunity to have some fun come football season, man.
Hail to the victors, hail yeah, hail to the concrete. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
But we really, we really appreciate, you know, your short time with us. And uh, we're going to miss your efforts, man. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Um, I will say that we are trying to have a transition period. I, I tried really hard um to keep Jeffrey here and get him to stay. Um, but I understand. But we are trying to uh work on a transition period where Jeffrey will be here um until, um, Jeffrey will be here on a limited basis, fifteen, uh, about fifteen hours a week. Um, working on that right now with HR. And that's the goal, so that we can at least have, you know, Jeffrey participating on, I'm sorry about the train noise. Um, where we can at least have that, some limited, you know, assistance from Jeffrey on, on specific projects um while we work to fill this position. As you know, the position, the former lead pla- plant, the lead planner position um was vacant for a lengthy time. So we're hoping to at least have the, some part-time assistance while we seek to fill that position. Um, so that's one staffing update. And then we are also um seeking, we, we had an intern we thought lined up to assist in um planning and zoning specifically. It unfortunately did not work out, but we are working again with U of M Flint to um see if we could get another intern lined up. Um, and that is hopefully moving forward, I just saw an email today. And so we, we will try to get that lined up as well. And then hopefully with the addition of the um, of the planner one, um, we can hopefully get a handle on, you know, a lot of this kind of backlog of work and processes and systems and, you know, have a much more streamlined process, especially with the adoption of the ordinance and hopefully the adoption of the zoning code. Um, we'll be able to function more effectively and efficiently. But that is, um, that's the update on the staffing uh plan right now.
Okay. Any questions?
Um, Ms. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel. Uh, Suzanne, thank, thank you, thank you, thank you for the update. Uh, Kelly, goodbye, 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 but thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, Jeffrey, thank you, thank you, thank you. But shifting gears a bit, we, we got in our pack at a memorandum with an update um of, of the staffing, including Jonathan Mateen. Um, but it's dated April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, is that a, a mistype?
Commissioner Wesley, yeah, Commissioner Wesley to Commissioner Jewel, it was, it was supposed to be twenty-twenty-one, so.
Okay, so that should read April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
That's when we revised that document.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and Joanne, welcome, Joanne, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much, I'm looking forward to it.
I heard someone else in there too.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Campbell, I, I wanted to make sure that uh what Commissioner Jewel was referring to, this is information that's dated from Thursday, twenty-twenty-one. The orienta- the orientation information binder? Is that what he was talking about?
No, uh, well, that, well, that, uh, what I'm talking about is in our packet, we got a memorandum to us from Suzanne regarding the staff update, and it was dated April twenty-third, twenty-twenty. And that memorandum should be dated April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. I, I, I think you're making reference, I think you're making reference to, and we can talk about it, when we get to the planning commission member binder, the title page.
Okay, because I've not, I did not receive that copy of that, what you're talking about. So I just wanted to make sure if I had the information.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, sir.
In your packet, it got April twenty-third, twenty-twenty, and it have memorandum, city of Flint, from Suzanne Wilcox, staff roles and bio, Jonathan Mateen. Did you see that? It's right, it's right with your uh, it would be with your agenda and how you catch on to a Zoom meeting. But to see that when it says April, where it says April twenty-third, twenty-twenty, it should be April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, I'm just looking for it and I do not have it. So someone could just uh email a copy out, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Commissioner Wesley, this is Bill Vanderkook. We will send Commissioner Campbell a copy of that if she did not get it.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, are there any resolutions?
Commissioner Wesley, this is Bill Vanderkook.
Yep.
My knowledge here, no resolutions.
Okay. Old business, old planning commissions member orientation binder. Did everyone change their bylaws in the binder? Did you get bylaws? Everybody got bylaws, new bylaws that go in your binders?
Yes. I did, Commissioner Jewel did.
Yes, I did.
Well, that's what I was asking a question about was the, uh, for commissioner member orientation information binder. So this should go into our binder, that's what I was referring to, what the other, the other article I didn't have. So I was looking at my computer to make, was something that was sent to me and I didn't have it. But I assume that we're supposed to add this to our binder, correct?
Right, take the old one out because that's our old bylaws. In the binder is the old bylaws, take the old ones out and insert the new ones.
Okay, want to make sure, thank you.
The purpose for this being on our agenda this evening was to, are we going to establish a date to go through those? Go through that binder?
Okay.
Commissioner Wesley, that would be the, that would be correct. So there was, it was a title page, there was the bylaws included in the packets. And then an update, uh, you know, John Mateen's um bio. So those three things are what's, what we sent out to the commission. Um, and additionally, we did discuss scheduling a, a review session at a future date. Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, status of the I four seventy-five committee. Suzanne, now, I think Schifler was his name, no, 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 no. The, the guy with this, with the mayor's office.
Oh, Calfani Stevens.
Calfani, yeah. Any communication?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Any communications with uh Mr. Calfani? Any communications with, uh, Mr. Calfani?
I did speak to him tonight, um, and invited him to come to this meeting. Bill, uh, shared with me that, uh, the commissioners had requested. An update on the I four seventy five committee. He had another obligation, was unable to attend. And he shared with me that he really does not have any updates. He was unable to attend the last meeting. He thought you had actually attended the meeting, Commissioner Wesley?
I wasn't there, I don't think.
Okay, so, um, so he does not have any updates. He intends to be at the next meeting and he can provide an update at this point. Um, I did ask him because Bill, and I just want to confirm this because Bill mentioned something to me about a staff person. Um, supposed to be appointed to that, uh, committee as well. And I, I just wanted to clarify that. Is that, is that something that the commissioners discussed? That you're, uh, requesting that a, a staff person from planning and development be made part of that committee or was the staff person actually Calfani?
So if I can, this is Commissioner Jordan, I was part of that meeting that, um, Chairman Wesley and I had with Brian Larkin before Brian left the city. Um, at that point, Brian was the point person on the four seventy five project. And in the course, that conversation, he had agreed to make sure that we had Chairman Wesley. Being able to be part of those meetings as well as a planning staff member. The notion being that if they're talking about a major potential planning project affecting the city of Flint, that it was appropriate to make sure that. Somebody from the city planning department was involved and that so they could be aware. Um, and so that was a commitment that was made by the person who was at, at that point, the chief of staff for the city.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Jordan. That's helpful. Um, I didn't actually remember that, but, um, now I do. So, um, so I will talk to Calfani about that. I, I don't know if that has been communicated to him, but I will share that with him. And I think his intent is to be at the next meeting. And he was planning on coming tonight, but he ended up having another obligation. So I think he'll be here at the next planning commission meeting. Um, I'm not sure when the next I four seventy five meeting is. But after that, he will, he will be here to present and I will share that information with him as well.
That might be sometime in May, the next meeting, because I think they're doing this quarterly or something. So I'm thinking it might be in May sometime, but that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any new business? No new business? I guess the next item on our agenda is the German. She will entertain a motion for a German if, uh, there's nothing else for the good of the order.
Well, Commissioner, uh, Chairman Wesley, before we, uh, fade off into the sunset. I, I want to say thank you to you as our previous chair, to Elizabeth Jordan as our previous vice chair. And to Carol Ann Blower as our previous secretary. And to say thank you, thank you, thank you for your effort and your work and the work you'll be doing for this coming year. So again, thank you for your.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for hanging in there with us.
You might get anything.
Entertain a motion for a German and thank everybody for coming up. Kelly Thompson, take care of yourself.
Thank you.
All righty.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Entertain a motion for a German. Good night.
Good night.
Attorney Thompson?
Yes.
Have you, are you still online?
I'm here, yes.
Okay, this is Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
I wanted, I wanted to personally thank you for making sure that everything was always on point. And this is sort of different, I've been on the commission about twelve years and, so I want to let you know, it was very refreshing. You know, the security that was always on point. And if you didn't know it, you would get offline, go find it and come right back. So that's a lot of effort. So just thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner Campbell. Thank you very much.
Okay, and good luck in your endeavor.
Yeah.
Thank you. I will miss you guys too. It's been a pleasure.
Kelly, you can come and visit us.
I sure will. You can't get rid of me.
You better bless him, Kelly. Thank you.
All right, guys.